Call the meeting to order. I would like to invite Zach Hartman to come forward. He's Eagle Scout from Montgomery and he's going to lead us.
Going for his Eagle Scout.
He's going for his Eagle Scout and he's going to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Trustee Hines.
Trustee Youngerman.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Dunn.
Here.
All right, moving right along. We have public participation, public comment. Any of the three members of the public that are here would like to speak? I know the audience, the videotape can't see that, but we can.
Did everything.
All right, we'll move on. Items for discussion this evening, we have, the first one, the big one, is FY '17 budget review. We do have a PowerPoint and I'll ask Director Van Vorn for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brawley, in front of you tonight, you should have received a packet with slides on it at each of your spots. So we're going to go through the presentation. If you do have questions, please ask them as we go along. Fiscal year '16 general fund budget overview. We budgeted $9.4 million for revenues and $9.2 million for expenditures with a surplus of $183,000. Projections, right now, we are looking at revenue of $9.6, expenditures of $9.1, and then a surplus of approximately $550,000. The main reason for this is sales taxes coming in higher than budget for revenues. And then, on the expenditure side, departments have done a great job this year in limiting expenditures. Fiscal year '07 general fund budget overview requested, we had $9,823,000 expenses. We had $9,864,000 for a deficit of $41,000. What we are recommending to the board is revenues of $9,823 and expenses of $9,727 for a surplus of $95,000. Three equals 80. This comes up every year. There are three revenue sources that make up over 80 percent of the village's general fund revenues. The first is sales tax. We are budgeting sales tax in fiscal year '17 at approximately $3.8 million. This is a 5 percent increase over last year and that represents a full year of several stores that have opened over the last year. The second is property taxes. The property taxes budgeted for revenue are $2,252,000. This is approximately $12,000 above the 2014 levy extension and it represents new property only, as the board did direct staff to freeze the levy on existing property. The EAV shown in the table has decreased by just over 1 percent from 2013 to 2014. And based upon estimated EAV right now, the 2015 levy will actually be the first time it's increased since 2009. The third is income tax, $1,881,000. IML estimates this number every quarter. And for fiscal year '17, they are looking at a decrease of approximately $3 per capita. And for the village, that represents about $55,000 less than what we received, what we're planning on receiving in fiscal year '16. Regarding general fund expenditures, what is in the budget for personnel? Staff included in the recommendation, the following: administration, master's, public administration intern for administration, two part-time records clerks at 15 hours per week in police, promotion of one officer to sergeant, three new officers, two new patrol officers, and then one to replace the new sergeant, public works, a part-time mechanic, and three summer seasonal employees.
Can I make a comment? I'm very happy to see the additional officers in the budget. I've been the broken record for how many years I go to the chief at budget time. How many officers do you think we can get in the budget this year? And the last two years, we haven't had anybody. We haven't been able to budget, to add officers. So I'm very, very pleased to see this. So thank you, everyone, for getting it on our budget.
Is this three officers plus the sergeant, right?
Right. So there's a promotion.
Okay.
And then one will fill his position. And then there'll be two new officers. So there'll be three new faces in total.
Current officer will be promoted to sergeant.
Okay.
And then we'll hire an officer to fill that spot.
Okay.
Plus two new officers in addition.
All right.
Regarding insurance, health insurance is budgeted at a 15 percent premium increase in October. Dental insurance at a 6 percent premium increase, life insurance at 3 percent, and then liability at 3 percent as well.
Just a note on the health insurance, the employees will be picking up another percentage. We're changing the, each year, we're updating their portion by a percentage, so.
Several general expenditures throughout the budget that we wanted to talk about. The first is the vehicle reserve transfer. If you remember, from 2014, we pre-funded some years. And so 2017 is going to be the first year that we are funding at 100 percent for the year. So that will continue through 2029. Also, please note that several vehicles and equipment were removed from the replacement schedule based upon recommendations from Director Happenstead. The sales tax rebate agreements with several businesses will continue and includes an increase of $90,000 to $968,000. The total of the tree program increased from $86,000 in fiscal year '16 to $102,000 in fiscal year '17. And then last, street sweeping is budgeted for five times per year, which is an increase of $50,000 from what it was in the previous year.
May I ask a question? The increase in the tree program, so how many total trees do we estimate we can now replace?
We are estimating 150 trees that would be replaced in fiscal year '17.
Thank you.
A few capital items that I wanted to mention. Seal coating of the village hall was delayed for one year and has been pushed to fiscal year '17. So we're looking to complete that in fiscal year '17. The computers and servers are on a replacement schedule similar to the vehicles. And so that will amount to $39,000. That is across all departments. And then public works will be replacing two 60-inch mowers and the trailers that those mowers are hauled on.
I apologize. I didn't know you wanted us to wait till the end with the questions. Sorry.
You can ask them as we go, but just in case there are others, so.
If there are anymore.
Thank you.
I would like to thank everybody involved in the budget this year. It's been the, I think, the best budget process we've had in a while. You know, seeing our revenues come back up has made it easier this year, taken away a lot of the tough decisions we've had the last few years, been able to add some staff and replace some equipment. So it's nice to see and made a lot, a lot easier this year. So like I said, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the general fund. At our next meetings, we'll be talking about capital improvement, some of the other smaller funds, then the water fund. And I think we're looking at the last meeting in March for eventual approval of the budget, so.
Correct.
There'll be plenty of time for questions if you don't have them now. But if you have them now, we're happy to.
Questions?
I have a couple. The first would be more of a comment than a question. I'm pleased to see the increase in the tree replacement program. And I'm sure if Trustee Youngerman were here, he would echo my sentiment that our work isn't really complete until all those trees are replaced. And I would love to see that number increase by magic or otherwise. I think the sooner we restore our forest to the condition it was designed to be in, the more attractive the community will be. And it's better for the environment and property values. The property owners that look out at a streetscape where the trees aren't there anymore see that every day. And the sooner we can act on it, the better. I would like to address the Economic Development Corporation line item. A couple of years ago, we increased that expenditure by quite a bit, almost 50 percent. And I believe the rationale for that was that we needed to implement some special programs, brochure, advertising. Last year, we spent at roughly the same level. I'm not seeing a business plan or a budget to support the request that's being made this year. I don't see this as an endowment. I think it's precious money. Nothing's more important to our future than growth. And I think it falls to all of us to think about how we're spending our allocation for growth, which is precious small. So if I'm missing something, it's easy to correct, but I'd like to see what that money would be used for. And I'd like for us to look at it collectively as a group.
I would agree with you, and I think we can certainly do that. We can have, we can ask Char to come to one of our meetings or doc and talk about the plan for the year, the budget that the MEDC board, that Denny and I both sit on, approved previously, and kind of the plan of attack for the year. I think that's a valid question and a valid concern. So it's something we can work with, with them to come forward.
We can provide the village board with a copy of the budget, if you like, of the MEDC budget that was approved.
Trustee Dunn, may I ask, you're just looking for what their plan is for the coming year. You're not necessarily questioning the results that we have so far.
Well, I think anytime you can tie results to expenses, that's always a happy moment. But I'm mindful that this is an investment we're making. We made a significant increase in investing our money in a single source. Right now, we only have one economic development strategy, and we're spending all of our money on that one tactic. I'm a little uncomfortable with putting all of our eggs in one basket. If it's, if it's to be that way, then I want to make sure that's a good basket and it's full of good ideas.
I'm under the impression that they are working together with community development. So we do have a joint effort, I would say. I realize that the $90,000 is going to the MEDC, but there's also a combination of forces, if you will, that are working on economic development.
I think the broken record on my end of the table, year after year, has been a lack of confidence in how that money's being used and the strategy behind it. We have two members that represent the board at those meetings. I don't have much of a file to point to or refer to. And I think we had this conversation last year and we'll have it again next year because I think it's our duty.
We did, we did give you everything from last year. And we can do the same thing again for the future and what we did last year. But by then, you should have some kind of file over these years. But I don't understand what else you'd want, where do you want to put the money? I don't get that. I mean, you can see what happened this year as far as all the building going on in Montgomery. We've had a great year. We all said that. And I guess I just don't know where else you'd want to.
I want to connect the dots.
Well, we can give you information, then you can connect them that way, and then you, you know.
Well, I think what we've done previously is Char has come to this board periodically, I don't know if it's quarterly or semi-annually, just to give an update of the process. Because I've been on the other side of that as well, where when I wasn't on the board, you don't go to the monthly meetings of the MEDC board or the BCEC meetings in the morning, just to gauge the process or what's going on with the, with the MEDC and the partners that they have, too. That's another huge benefit to this MEDC is that you sit on, we sit in these meetings with the guy who runs the Caterpillar plant, which I hadn't met the person who ran that previously. And now he comes to these meetings. And so I think those relationships that we're building there are key, especially with their turmoil, I think, in Caterpillar right now. So I think that's something that we should be providing at the budget process every year with, here's, or before the budget process, here's what the MEDC's plan is for the year. They've approved it and their board has talked about what they're planning on doing. And I think it's prudent information for us to have. Also, not exactly a bad thing for the public to have an eye on, too.
Well, Jeff has put that in our notes, in our packets, a lot of the MEDC stuff. And all you got to do is look at it and you say, okay, we started this, 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 and spent this much money. And you got 50-some businesses, over 50-some businesses involved. I mean, sooner or later, I guess you got to keep your packets, is what it amounts to, because it's all been there. But I can see her coming again and going through it again if you, it's not a problem, but.
I'll try to make sure we're getting Char's reports into you, to everybody monthly when they come out, that we get them out to the board.
So, Trustee Dunn, do you think that would make you more comfortable, just to see that presentation of what the plan is for the coming year?
Absolutely. I mean, we've asked our own departments to go through that, and they've done it. I don't have a very thick MEDC file, so either I'm missing something or, if somebody else has a thick file, speak out, but I don't have it.
And I think part of what your point is, is just the clarity of it. And again, here in this forum, where the public can hear it and see it, and it's there.
Basically what we've just added.
Just to see it, be able to document it, more so than our notes. That's great, but the public doesn't see and hear all of that. So I think that's more of it, is just the clarity.
Any other comments on the general fund this evening? I know you guys have had some time to look this over. You'll have a few more months to look it over before we.
More trees.
There's three for more trees, then.
More trees. I was going to say, was that you for more trees, or you're just echoing his comment? Trustee Youngerman as well.
I'm sure. All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. If you have comments, obviously you can bring them up at a future meeting. Move on to Montgomery in Motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Jeff's going to pull up a few slides for you. I just want to take a few minutes to update you on what we're doing in this regards. And then Pete's going to talk a little bit about an idea that we have with, working with hopefully Rotary and maybe some other organizations. What we've done since the last time we talked to you is hired a rendering consultant who we've worked with, take some photos of key locations along the river primarily, and had him work up some, these are just sketches. They're not the final product. The final product will be in color. But it's the example of the type of renderings that he's capable of doing that we'd like to have as the hallmark of a marketing program to focus on Montgomery in Motion. And again, it's kind of a global concept that you can narrow down into some different ideas depending on which group we're working with, whether it's the Park District or the Chamber and the MEDC, or private investors that look at the Mill District as being underserved in terms of commercial services. And we can hopefully add some mixed-use types of development. This is an example of what we'd like to show near the dam or in that general vicinity. Matt and Pete have talked extensively in the past about working with IDNR and looking at what could be accomplished in terms of a partial dam removal, or possibly the body of water that's just adjacent to the dam being opened up to the river so that we would have the ability to move canoes and kayaks at a greater length all the way down to Yorkville, potentially. And with that would go the idea of, at some location along the river, a dock possibly handicapped accessible for both kayaking and canoeing. So this is an example of what, and again, it's just a sketch. It's not the final product, but something that could help sell that vision that we have for the river. And let me back up just a second. Remember, Montgomery in Motion, we were talking about all the activities that go along with the river, whether it's canoeing and kayaking, whether it's the trails adjacent to the river for biking, walking, jogging, the river run that we have each October. All of those things kind of tie into the idea of Montgomery in Motion and showing that we have a tremendous asset that frankly is underutilized, in staff's opinion. The third one that we have is just an example of the walking trail. And there's a bike, it might be a little tough to see, but there's a bike at the far end. I think we're going to pull that more forward. We really shouldn't have people walking on both sides of the path, anyway. So have maybe a bike that would be more centered on the left-hand side there. Again, combining the idea of walking, jogging, biking, canoeing, and kayaking on the river. So that's a very brief, but kind of gives you an update of a part of what Montgomery in Motion could be. The final products should be available in color in the next, I would say, month, and we'll obviously present those to the board. I think it's been a good exercise at a relatively low cost for the consultant to come in and do some professional work like this that we can make as the hallmark of something bigger in an overall program. Pete has come up with an idea that we've talked about with the Rotary Foundation and the General Rotary Group. That has been done in Kankakee, and I think he's going to talk a little bit about that. I believe Jeff has a, do you have that up as well?
I don't have the Kankakee one, but I have a couple other.
Oh, he has some other examples. Okay.
This is maybe something you guys have seen, was it the only publication I happen to have noticed? It's something that was done in Kankakee. And it struck my eye as being kind of a neat way to draw attention to the community and maybe have some community involvement in the project. So, you know, it was just one of those ideas that I thought was a good one. And, but we didn't really want to pursue it any further if, if the board wasn't in agreement of being able to paint one of our streets. And the idea, I think, would be is that we would do it in, you know, in a methodical method, but we would have a committee likely through the Rotary. We're not, you know, we didn't want to get too far ahead of the train. But we'll, you know, have some sort of a competition or arrangement to try to get some images that we could use for painting the street. It has to be relatively simple so we can lay it out like the geometric that they have, which is pretty basic. And then, you know, it's not going to last forever, so it's going to be painted, but it'll wear out. And so we could, you know, effectively change it from time to time. But we thought maybe we could time it so that just prior to Montgomeryfest, maybe we try to get it painted so that it's there for that and, you know, get some attention. You know, who knows? We have, you know, there's 6,000 cars a day that drive on River Street and Mill, so it may wear out, you know, pretty fast. But at least I think it would be kind of neat to do, to get, you know, the ball rolling and kind of draw attention to things. And it might be a fun thing for people to come down on a Saturday and help paint it, you know. So that was the idea. So we're really hoping to get some direction from the board as to whether you think it's a good idea, a bad idea, or just what, so.
I can see that they haven't seen this before.
Did you want me to make a couple of comments at this time, or just?
Yeah.
Okay. As Pete said, we did discuss this at our Rotary Foundation Board meeting. And then Pete discussed it a little bit with the general membership. One of the key objectives for Rotary, we've come up with three now. We're pretty focused, is to bring the community together. And we thought this would be a really good activity to bring everybody together from all over the village. And we kind of have a location in mind, right out front, and would be drawing people to the downtown as well. So we were very excited about it. Rotary Club is all over this. So if everyone is in agreement that we could paint the streets, we have people who will work on it and organize it and bring people together.
I think it's fantastic. I paint and sculpt. I really like it. I like the, I like the intersection at Mill, right here. I think the intersection is a little bit more dynamic than just a street, especially during the fest, being that it's the entryway to the fest. I think that would.
Right, during the fest. But then you'd have to close down the bridge to do the painting. That's why we talked over here. We did talk about that, too.
We shut the bridge down for like a month and a half. So, I mean, if you give people notice and you shut it down for a weekend, you know.
Yeah, I mean, those are logistical issues we'll have to work through, obviously. And we would need cooperation from the police department and public works to be able to manage traffic and do things like that. But obviously, we didn't want to go any further until, you know, we knew it was okay to move forward.
I really like it. I think it's, again, to draw people to the downtown area and then almost have like a grand opening of it, unveiling type of thing.
I think to take a step back from the painting and move back into the overall Montgomery in Motion, this is, obviously, we don't have, you know, $2 million or $10 million sitting on the sidelines to build one of those world's tallest Ferris wheels like they have in Vegas and Chicago and all that. But what I think staff has come up with is a vision that gets people excited about our community, which, just seeing the black and white sketches that you send, kind of gives me that vision of possibility of what could be down here and what we all can help build. And so I applaud you guys coming up with that. I saw this in the IML publication and heard rumors, you guys talking about this. So I am 100% on board. I think this will be one of those things that really ties people together. It won't last forever. We're not, you know, renaming the water tower for a business or anything like that and painting that. We're going to paint, paint these and kind of, I guess rejuvenate the downtown, so.
I have a brush and I'll be here.
What does a Kankakee do? Like, it's been a year now. What, I could see repainting it, but to let it fade and look like crap, like out here, Doug and I talked about, you can't even find the strips to put your car in because it's faded so bad now. And it's there, but it looks bad and people are parking cockeye. I mean, it's just, it gets to that point, what's, what's this going to look like in a year? And I like to see Kankakees, and if it's still bright and nice and whatever, or repaint it every two years or something. But to let it just go, okay, maybe we can put something else over the top. It's going to look like a house being repainted, you know. It just doesn't.
I think you probably power wash it off.
Yeah, I mean, that's a fair, certainly a fair comment. And I'll be happy to make a road trip down to Kankakee. I can't think of anything better to do, so. Take a look at it and see what it looks like. Because, yeah, we don't want it to be tacky, for sure. And, you know, maybe we have to leave it in place for a couple of months and then, like you say, power wash it off or whatever. So.
Yeah, it's a cyclical thing.
Definitely, there's some loose ends we got to tie up, certainly. I mean, I don't, we're not saying we have all the answers at this time, but again, that's a valid point, for sure.
I think like any more outside-the-box idea, there's risk associated with it. But this, that kind of stuff is manageable risk. We can figure it, figure it out. But I hear the concern on that.
Maybe the street sweepers don't actually street sweep this. It would be a bad time to find out that it rips it up.
All right. Awesome.
All right. We'll do a little research and we'll get back to you with some details. Super.
All right, moving on. For the first time in several months, we actually have a cow, so we'll have department updates.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank everybody again, what Trustee Spurling mentioned, Village Administrator Zofel. We appreciate the, the work that Justin and staff and Jeff did on, on the budget. First time in a long time that we were able to hire three in a budget year. So I appreciate that. Number one, Officer Cody Klingberg, he is in his seventh week of the academy, doing very well. Number two, Number two, Officer Lauren Shipman, she just recently went to solo patrol, and she's progressing very well, too. Third, this Thursday at 5:00 PM, we have our Police Commission meeting. We'll be discussing the current patrol eligibility list and also discussing the next testing process. This current list is fading fast. It is technically over in October, but if we exhaust the list, we're able to implement a new list before that. So at that time, I will let you know after Thursday. I'll report back next time. Thank you very much.
Is that Police Commission meeting, a closed meeting, or is that an open meeting?
No, it's open. Be at the Village Hall, or I'm sorry, the PD at 5:00 PM in the community room.
All right. Director Happenstedt.
Yes, thank you. I somewhat want to echo, echo chief's comments. I thank you all, and I feel honored and privileged that you've entrusted me with thinking outside the box on some of these budgetary items, especially when it comes to the vehicle reserve fund. We've, we've made some changes in how we operate, and so far, those seem to be well-received, and I, I appreciate that support. In addition to that, you may be pleased to know that I intend to be bringing forth a recommendation at next week's meeting for about forty thousand dollars in tree purchases, which will amount to about two hundred and eighty roughly trees to be planted yet this spring. And lastly, just an update, the IRP bid opening was conducted today. There were two bidders, and those are still under review, just going through all the details to make sure we've got everything covered. But the numbers came in about where we expected them, or even a little bit below, so that's good. Good news.
What's IRP?
The.
Infrastructure Road Program. Thank you. The new program with the sales tax money.
Those acronyms sometimes.
I just leaned in to ask Jeff the same thing, like IRP, so.
Director Van Vorn?
Thank you.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you what Laffo stands for, but never mind.
I have that written down in here, so I want to echo both chief and director Happenstedt. Thank you to all departments who assisted with the budget and met with us after submitting your requests, so again, thank you. The Village Hall door system is currently operational, and the police department door system will be operational soon. They started today and ran into a couple of small issues, but hopefully those will be fixed, and that will be operational within the next week. Financial software update, we actually went live with the software last Friday. We are adding more and more people each day just to make sure that the access that has been provided to them is adequate, and with that.
Director Young? No echoing.
No echoing.
No echoing.
Did anybody do a good job on the budget?
You didn't get any money.
I don't think I got anything new, so.
No.
Tula has been out on medical leave for a couple of weeks, and she'll be out for a couple more weeks. I think most of you were aware of that, but we've been fortunate to have a, a person that had worked for us part-time. Because of an injury in her industrial-type job, her company, her name is Tanya, and she had worked with us some last year because she can't go back to her regular pipe fitting job. But we're fortunate to have her on board in Tula's absence, and she's done a nice job for us. We're working with several companies, MEDC and, and Community Development have been working with several companies, one of which is Liken Tire Recyclers, and they're looking at the 2001 Greenfield Building. It's a hundred thousand square foot building that's been vacant for a number of years and, or underutilized, I should say. And they'll be coming before the Plant Commission in March for a special use for some outside storage, which, I know we've had a lot of outside storage cases lately, but this one would be on a paved surface and really blocked by the building itself, and it's in an industrial area. So I think this will be a good use and get the property back operational, hopefully sometime later this spring or summer. U-Haul was in today, and they're talking about the building plans that they need to convert the inside of the building. And we met with them today, Mike and I, and went through their plans, so they'll be going as soon as they can get a permit, and then as the weather gets nicer, they'll do the outside improvements that we've all talked about with the commission and the board in the past. American Crystal, which is the Awkut Road site, has been slow. It's been messed up a little bit because of the weather, but they're about a month behind. They have been working on the foundation through the winter. They had intended to inflate the dome itself in February. That's obviously not gonna happen, but it should happen within the next month. So they're a little behind schedule. They feel that they can make up the timeframe this summer on construction and get that operational for the sugar company that needs it by the beginning of November. And so the Rail Spurs are going through the process of being approved as well. Fuller's Car Wash, Ogden Hill, multi-tenant building, all of those should be coming forward this spring for permits. And one other thing I wanted to note was the, Community Development's going to be submitting a riverboat development grant, application for entry monumentation at key locations to replace some of the wood entry monument signs to the village. Rotary, in all likelihood, will be involved in that as well. It's important because I think the county looks favorably upon not just a municipality that wants to do a project, but a municipality that wants to do a project with other organizations. I know Stan's very familiar with that. If we can pull in the Rotary and some other groups, I think it'll make it more likely that that grant could be given to us. Real quick, ribbon cutting for South Moon is Thursday. Ribbon cutting and grand opening. Char and I have been working on that with, with Katie and Harland, and so that'll be at noon on Thursday. President Prowley's gonna present them with a plaque, and so that's a good thing. And then MEDC and Community Development are gonna work on an industrial properties tour for this summer as well, so, thank you.
I have two questions for Rich. Could we be notified when the Sugar Dome is going to do the, be inflating? Because that'd be kind of cool to see it in person.
Yes.
And the other question I have for you, the tire recycling, what was the address they're looking at?
That's 2001 Greenfield. It's basically behind like Pom Tire and the, what's the storage yard? ComEd Storage Yard? To the, to the south. It's not, the, the storage will not be visible from Awkut at all. It should be behind the building itself, so it, it'd be, the storage would be on the south side of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Richard has had a couple of questions. I get these same two questions quite frequently. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I thought it pertinent at this time. The Niners, do you have a timeframe on them and their activity? And then also the, probably not for Rich, but the Webster Street Crossing. I know they were ramping up to do that last year, and the weather kind of put that on hold. If you guys know any updates on those?
Todd might have a better update, but our understanding was that they were gonna look at spring when the weather got better for the crossing.
Yes, that's correct. I think the, the biggest holdup will be once pavement can be laid, the, the temperatures and the climate will allow. So I would guess maybe April at the earliest, but I can reach out and try and firm something up.
Okay. In terms of Niners, we've been told that they intend to open by the end of March. They were delayed through a series of a number of different things, nothing really that involved the village, per se, but they had some contractors on board, they were working. Things didn't work out with that contractor. The owner wanted to change some things after the design had already been put into place on how they'd renovate the building. That caused a little bit of a problem. It was shut down for a little while. They've been out there working, especially when the, the weather's been nicer earlier in the month, and you'll notice that there's a tower that was added, and that stonework started. They had to pull off of that with the weather being as cold as it's been. They should be back on that, but they have been working on the inside as well. So we've been told that they intend to open by the end of March.
Awesome. All right. Hearing nothing, has there any new or unfinished business this evening? If not, we have a meeting next week.
Just want to mention that Wisconsin is still winning, and that the village clerk and I are big Wisconsin fans. We watched them beat Maryland number two, so just mentioning that. Poor Mr. Youngerman ain't here, and the red and the gray aren't doing that well. Just kind of mention that, too.
All right, noted. Thank you. All right, with that, we don't have executive session this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the rule, please.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
I'm adjourned. Thank you.